Special study session, so I guess we'll just take it away.
Yes.
Go ahead.
That's, uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council.
Evening.
Let me start over then. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a study session to discuss short-term room rentals. Um, just load our presentation here. As the City Council may be aware, about a year ago, the City staff hosted a task force of community members to discuss the short-term room rental topic in Daly City. As most of you may know, such rentals are presently not regulated by the city of Daly City. So a person comes to the city's planning division and asks, can I run an Airbnb or, you know, VRBO out of my home? And we actually tell them that there are no regulations. We do tell them that they need a city business license, but aside from that, there really isn't any sort of, uh, any kind of a guideline for how many days you can do this. Some people don't even live in the home that they are hosting the VRBO in, and so there really is something that happens without any regulation. So at some point in the past, there was a concept to follow suit with other cities in California and around the nation, in fact, to develop an ordinance to regulate such ordinance, or to regulate such short-term room rentals, as well as potentially collect the transit occupancy tax that many communities collect on such rentals. And so to help us in developing what the regulations might be, we devised the concept of the task force to talk about short-term room rentals, as well as to discuss the topic of long-term room rentals, those that are happening for extended periods of time. But tonight's conversation is limited to the short-term rental topic. The task force that was comprised back, again, about a year ago, was about 11 people, 11 members, nine of whom were Daly City residents. We thought it was important to gain the perspectives of other viewpoints, and so we invited a SAMCAR representative to join the task force, as well as a member of the Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County. The Legal Aid Society assists people who are encountering issues with their rentals and provided, you know, a discussion or help with us in that perspective. One of the residents that was on the task force actually operates a short-term room rental, and so her perspective was uniquely different in that way. What we thought we would start tonight's presentation with was a presentation from Ulrich Benzner. Mr. Benzner helped, he's from Host Compliance. This is a company that actually enforces and manages compliance with such short-term room rentals for cities. So if a city was to say that they adopted an ordinance and wanted to better understand who in the community was conducting such rentals and how to collect tax from those rentals, Host Compliance, the company that Mr. Benzner started, actually does that. And so as part of the task force, the city staff enlisted Mr. Benzner's assistance, and he gave a presentation last April to the task force, and that was a central point of conversation with the task force. And we thought that it would also be helpful for the council to hear his presentation. So beyond going any, with, before we go any further, we thought we'd have Ulrich give his presentation tonight, so I'm gonna switch over to his presentation at this time.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm happy to be here today. As the introduction said, my name is Ulrich Benzner. I'm the founder and CEO of a company called Host Compliance. And as stated, we assist now 230 different cities across the country with the enforcement and management of compliance with very short-term rental-related regulations. So I have a very broad view of what other cities are doing out there, and would like to share, first, a little bit of information on what is happening in the city of Daly City as it relates to short-term rentals, and also a few regulatory best practices that other cities have adopted to deal with various planning objectives. So that's what I had intended to cover today, and then there's also a little bit of information on best practices for enforcing, because one of the things that's really important is, as you think about regulation, that you make sure that the rules that are adopted actually are enforceable, because a lot of cities have a history of adopting rules that are a little bit pie in the sky, and it turns out to basically make no difference on the ground, because staff has no ability to actually making sure that people follow those rules. So that's what I had in mind here for the agenda. To just give a little bit more background, we're founded here in San Francisco, currently work with 70 cities across California, so have a lot of experience here, particularly in the state. And the team behind the company really consists of a combination of data scientists and people who have a lot of experience in city government. So one of our founders is a city manager, another one is a code enforcement guy, so we have a lot of experience with actually doing the work that staff is dealt with. This is 115, because that was last year, now we have 230, so we doubled since last year, and I think that tells you a little bit about the magnitude of this problem across the country. This is not just a Daly City issue. Every city in the country is actually dealing with this particular challenge, and as a result, we have been able to grow very rapidly to help them support that. So let's just dive in and talk a little bit about numbers. I think the first thing to understand is that this is an incredibly fast-growing industry. So since 2011, there's been more than 800% growth in the number of short-term rentals across the nation. And when you see an 8X increase in an industry, you also see a lot of people want to join into that. So now there's more than 125 different websites that facilitate short-term rentals in one shape or another. You're obviously familiar with Airbnb, VRBO, the flip key, maybe HomeAway, but the reality is the list of websites that do this is much, much longer, and that makes everything a little bit more complicated, because it's a little bit of a whack-and-mole dynamic. You find someone on one website, and then if you decide that they shouldn't be operating and shutting down, they just move to another website, and you end up constantly having to sort of chase them around there and there. Here in Daly City, and this is as of last year when we ran the report, there was 405 active short-term rental listings for the city, and listing is essentially an ad, that's not a physical property. So when you deduplicate people who essentially post the same physical property on multiple websites, you end up with 370 or 368 unique rental units. So that's essentially the magnitude of last year. I'll run the numbers after today's meeting, we can sort of give an update if you're interested, but that wasn't part of the original scope of work. In terms of where they're located, I think the first thing to realize is that 60% or so are in just four of the city's neighborhoods. So these are essentially the neighborhoods as defined by the planning department, using sort of like the typical boundaries. And I think it's important to understand that, because the impacts may be very different from neighborhood to neighborhood because of the concentration of those. As you can see, there's a pretty big concentration close to public transportation, and I think one of the reasons for that is that there are a lot of people who come and stay in Daly City who actually want to go and do business or be tourists in San Francisco, and therefore being close to public transportation is an advantage. So that's essentially the numbers here. Another thing to realize is that there are really two distinct kinds of short-term rentals in the city. There are room rentals, which is what the study said in the session, which is about basically people renting out a spare room, but there's also about 40% of the market which are what is called entire home rentals. So these are rentals where people rent out the entire house to a group of guests for the duration of the stay. And by definition, the owner of that property is not present during that stay, and that means a couple of things. One is that there's no one to sort of supervise the guests to make sure that they behave properly, but also there is the potential that this could be essentially an investor who bought the unit and is now renting it out on a full-time basis, so essentially running a full-time hotel in a residential neighborhood. And obviously, like, the impacts are very different between these entire home rentals, which is about 40% of the market, and the room rentals, which are essentially people renting out a spare bedroom, potentially to make ends meet. So understanding that differentiation, as you think about regulation, is important, because at the end of the day, they might have very different impacts, and also have a very different impact on especially affordable housing. So that's one observation. A couple of other observations, so about 78% of the rental units are in single-family homes, which I think is probably not too, sort of like surprising, given like your housing mix. And one thing that's also important is that most of the rentals are relatively small. So we're not talking about like a few mansions being rented out here, we're talking about a lot of studios, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units that are being rented out, which again is something that plays into how you think about the impact on affordable housing and other things like that. Another thing that's really interesting is that there is a very wide distribution in how often these hosts are renting out their properties. So about 44% of the rentals are rented out for three months or more each year, and that's obviously very different from someone renting out a spare bedroom a couple of weekends a year, to potentially maybe pay for their own vacation when they go abroad. So again, just like there are different kinds of rentals, entire unit and room rentals, there are also people who are essentially professional operators that rent out all the time or very often, and people who are just doing it very casually on occasion, and understanding that differentiation is important as well. So these are some of the numbers here, but I think it's interesting, it's not like a traditional, call it a standard distribution, like it's actually sort of like a bimodal distribution, where you have people who rent out all the time, or people who never almost rent out. There's not really, like, the median or the average is not very meaningful in this case here, it's really these two kinds of populations that act very differently. So that's something to keep in mind. So that was the numbers. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, we could also do it later, I don't know what the protocol is, but that was essentially just to set the, sort of like, the stage for the next conversation. In terms of regulations, I think it's important to understand that short-term rentals is a very complex issue, and there's a lot of great things about them, as well as there are some things that can potentially be challenging. I think one thing that most people will agree is that it's always good to create economic opportunity for folks and create opportunity for community development, and short-term rentals have the propensity to create a lot of economic spillover effects, both for the host, who is obviously making money in terms of rent, but also for the community at large in terms of opportunities for restaurants and retail in the sort of like surrounding areas. This is an analysis done in San Diego, I'm not gonna claim that's completely representative for Daly City, it's obviously a very different market, but the point is that in San Diego, the analysis says that each property made about $35,000 of economic benefit in this running area, of which half of it essentially went to the owner of that property, but the other half was benefits to sort of like retail stores, restaurants in the area, as well as taxes, TOT, sales tax, and other things. That said, there's obviously also all of the issues that you probably are thinking about right now. One issue that is very top of mind in most California cities is the implication on housing affordability, and especially the concern that investors are buying up what used to be long-term rental units, and now turning them into full-time Airbnbs or VRBOs. That obviously is a problem, because now essentially whoever used to live in that unit now no longer has a place to live, and eventually, I mean, it can lead to homelessness all the way down the chain, right? Because it's sort of like, it sort of moves all the way down the system. So that's something that's very top of mind in a lot of California jurisdictions. Some of the more subtle effects are things like it changes in neighborhood character. So a lot of times, if you live in a residential neighborhood, you have an expectation or sort of like assumption that you're gonna know your neighbors, and that's part of the reason why you moved into this area, and sometimes people are not excited about this idea that people are coming and going that they don't know in the neighborhood. Then there is obvious concerns about parking, which is pretty much always an issue in the Bay Area, but also concerns about potential party houses, which is not a big issue in Daly City, I can pretty much guarantee you that, but in other places like Florida, that's a huge issue. Then there's concerns about trash, because a lot of times people who do these short-term rentals come for weekends and long weekends, and therefore they will take out the trash on Sunday night when they check out, but if trash pickup day is Thursday or Friday, that means the trash could be sitting in the street for the entire day. And then finally, there's some concerns about sort of implications on traditional hotels. You guys don't have a lot of hotels, I believe, so it's not the biggest issue, but in other cities it is. So to sort of like address these particular issues, a lot of cities have come up with essentially customized rules that are meant to address whatever their pain points are, and I think that's important, as you think about this topic and come up with your policy, to be very clear on what is it that you're really trying to address here. You may not have to deal with everything at the same time. So for example, for cities where housing affordability and availability is a big issue, a lot of cities have adopted rules that say, to have a permit in short-term rental, you actually need to live on that unit, either by being the sort of like host during the stay, and you're renting out a room, or at least living there, call it six or nine months a year, and then renting out the entire unit when you go on vacation, or if you're like a flight attendant and you work out of town, maybe that makes sense to do that. But the idea is, we, a lot of cities do not allow investors to essentially come in and buy up multiple units and renting them out on a full-time basis. So that's one of the things a lot of cities are doing. If there is subsidized housing, they specifically disallow those units for being used for short-term rentals. Some cities also adopt annual rental frequency or duration limits, to say you can only rent out for this many days per year, so that's being used in a number of cities. For cities that are particularly concerned about the impacts in certain neighborhoods, and essentially this concentration issue, they have actually established specific quotas, so they will say, we'll only allow X percentage of the total housing units to be used as short-term rentals, and when that's sort of like is used up, there are no more permits available. For cities that are concerned about what the physical appearance of these neighborhoods are, they come up with rules that basically disallow signs, for example, so you don't end up with the whole thing becoming like Disneyland, and that's a real issue in certain areas, like in Anaheim, like people are literally putting in like Mickey Mouse-shaped, sort of like putting greens in the front yard, because that's what the tourist wants, right? I don't think that's a big issue in Daly City, but like in some places, this is a huge deal. For cities that are really concerned about the quality of life of the nearby residents, most cities have put in place rules regarding parking, so there is essentially a minimum amount of onsite parking required, and that typically correlates with the number of bedrooms. So if you have five bedrooms, you may need more parking than if it's a two-bedroom property that you're renting out. The same with garbage disposal, so a lot of times there will be like a requirement that you have a reasonable-sized garbage can, and by the way, that you have maybe pick up of your trash on the days when people generally check out, so maybe twice a week instead of once a week. For cities where noise is a big issue, they sometimes require that the host actually post the noise ordinance or summary of it on the inside of every exterior door, just so everyone is just reminded that after 10:00 PM you shouldn't be making a lot of noise. Sometimes they also require that that be written into the rental agreement, so whoever signs up and to face the state, there's like are certainly put a notice before they even make the booking that you can't have any noise after 10:00 PM, and that's good if people are planning on running a party there or something like that. Another best practice is to require a local contact person. So the idea with that is that when there is an issue, as a neighbor, you really just want this addressed in close to real time. It's not helpful to you to call the City Hall at 10:00 AM, at 10:00 PM on a Saturday night and be told that, like, we're not open until next Monday, and meanwhile, the issue is sort of going on. So having a local contact, you're able to actually direct the complaint to that person, and they can hopefully deal with it in real time. And then again, given the very different nature between hosted and unhosted stays, like these room rentals versus entire home rentals, certain cities differentiate between those, and essentially have more sort of like strict rules for entire home rentals than they have for room rentals. Finally, given safety is often a concern, cities adopt, for example, physical inspection requirements similar to what they do for long-term housing, or even habitability inspections, so that's something, a requirement. It can also be inspections of fire, safety, so that there's proper egress, carbon monoxide detectors and things like that. And if they don't have this history and sort of like staff to do inspections, at least there's a self-certification as part of a predictive application where you need to basically certify that these things are in place, so you don't create a safety hazard for folks. So those are some of the best practices. Mike, how are we doing on time here? Can we do a few more minutes? Is that okay? Okay, good. Just as I mentioned at the beginning, it's very important that you think a little bit about the practicality of the rules that you implement, so you don't end up with some kind of pie in the sky regulatory regimen that actually is not gonna work. So just on that, I think the first thing to acknowledge is that short-term rentals is one of these industries that, like, there's generally a very low level of compliance unless the city is proactive about it. You can't just sort of like adopt the rules and expect and hope and pray that everyone goes like magically comply, that's not gonna happen. Typically, you'll end up with about 10% compliance rate, so that's one of the things to sort of acknowledge first. That said, if you do do some enforcement, the reality is there is a relatively large potential for tax revenue, as well as permit fees and other things like that. So generally, you can have a program that's more than self-funded if you choose to. There's a lot of reasons why it's hard to enforce, I'm not gonna bore you with all the details, but one of the big problems is that short-term rental sites don't actually provide the address on the ads out there, so therefore finding them is very challenging, and then also because you have multiple different websites, like people tend to move around from site to site, and they tend to do this cross-listing, so you kind of never know what's going on, and that's really important. The other thing is that you could say, you know what, we're just gonna ban this, this is easy, we'll ban it, and the problem will somehow go away. The reality is that the problem generally doesn't go away, and so it's kind of like staking your head in the sand. So here's an example from City of Redondo Beach, they literally banned it, and they have 435 short-term rentals listed like online right now. So you can say like, the policy's not really working, so it's important to acknowledge that, like, what may seem simple is not as simple in practical terms. Another thing that's really important is you need to make it easy for staff to basically enforce whatever regulations you put in place. So one of the things that we highly recommend is that you make it such that if people are advertising without permit or license, whatever you decide may be the right, sort of like registration requirement, that will be taken as prima facie evidence of a violation of whatever that requirement is. So if you don't adopt this language, basically you put the owners and staff to catch peoples on the red-handed, and the chance that staff is gonna be sitting there and like catching someone as they like roll their suitcase through the front door is just very low, and you're gonna end up with basically no way to enforce it. So that's something that is important to remember. The other thing is, short-term rental hosts tend to be mom-and-pop operators, at least half of them are, and they don't understand sort of like all the rules about compliance and licensing and all that stuff, so you don't want to make it too difficult and complicated to be compliant. So this is an example of the registration process in San Francisco from a few years back. It literally like required like 21 different steps, it was a mess, right? And as a result, there was basically no one following the rules, as you can imagine, because it's just too much red tape, right? So you really want to make it easy. Other things is that you want to make sure that every property has its own license, so people don't start playing games with sort of like aggregating units and so like doing it too complicated, also makes it hard to enforce the tax regulations. And then also, really put everything online, again, in the spirit of making it easy. Short-term rental hosts tend to be a very tech-savvy population, they run their entire business off their cellphone often, so they expect that the regulatory side of things should also be easy, and ideally online, so try to make everything very, very sort of like easy and tech-savvy if you can. Another thing that's important to realize is that the population of short-term rental hosts is constantly churning and turning over, and I think that's a little bit different from the typical way that sort of like populations that the city is dealing with operates, right? So typically, when you have a business, they sort of establish themselves, and they're in business for five, six, seven, 10 years, and you sort of find them, and you don't have to find them again the next year. Short-term rentals are very different. So short-term rentals, and this is an example from South Lake Tahoe, which is actually much more stable than Daly City in terms of turnover, but basically in one year, 54% of the hosts turned over. So if you did an analysis and said, okay, as of, in this case, 9/1617, of all the short-term rentals that are out there right now, how many of those were essentially new operators that just came online in the last year? 54% of them were brand-new. That's in an established market, in a place like this, it's probably more like 70% that are new, which means that you have to constantly be monitoring the marketplace if you want to make sure everyone plays by the same rules. It's not like you just do the analysis once every year and you're done, like you're gonna literally miss all of the market very quickly. Another thing is you want to be able to have way to capture evidence of any sort of transgressions. So one of the things that happens is, the first thing that happens if you catch someone illegally operating is they take down their online ads, and now the city loses all their evidence, and you can end up in this like very difficult case situation, so you want to be able to capture all the evidence systematically. Another thing is that people sometimes tend to speculate a little bit in like how quickly you can catch them, so they're basically put up an ad, then if they get caught, they'll take down the ad, and then they'll put up a new one, and you have to catch them again. So you have to be relatively quick in essentially like doing whatever enforcement, because otherwise they'll just start gaming the system. So one of the things that's a best practice is like you basically send them a letter the minute you see them, and then record it in the database, and then if they come back online, you send them a sort of like a second notice. Also, to make it easy to deal with complaints, a lot of cities have adopted 24/7 call centers or hotlines where even after hours, neighbors can call in and report issues, and a lot of times that's a good idea, because most of the issues obviously happens at nights and weekends, where city staff is generally not available. Also, as part of that, cities have adopted technology that makes it easy for neighbors to provide evidence of their alleged violation, because there's a lot of frivolous complaints in this space, there's just sometimes a neighbor who really doesn't like their neighbor, and they're just like complaining and calling in all the time, and you need to be able to figure out if those are real or not, so you don't end up issuing citations on the wrong basis. So that's important. And then again, if you have an emergency contact for these types of rules, you now have the ability to call the emergency contact and notify them in real time that a complaint was received, and they can then seek to shut down that problem in real time. So that's it. I think one last point is, in California, especially the Bay Area, Airbnb has entered into what's called voluntary tax collection agreements, which is a great tool for receiving as much of the TOT as you can. And the way it works is essentially that a city would enter into an agreement with Airbnb. Airbnb basically agrees to collect and remit all the taxes from all the activity taking place on their website, and send that check to the city. So that's basically what these agreements do. One thing that's important to realize, though, is that they will generally not provide the addresses and the data as to where that money came from. So typically, what they will do is that they will basically say, here's the check, and trust us. And some cities are concerned about that for a lot of reasons, like one of it is like there's some obvious question about audibility and transparency. There's also sometimes the problem that a lot of that money may be coming from operators that don't follow the zoning regulations, so that's something to keep in mind as well. But I just want to put it out there, because if revenue is the primary goal of this, then this is a good tool to get as much revenue as you can. Just know that you're probably not gonna get all the data that you would like, unless you're willing to push them really hard and maybe have a lot of leverage with them. So those are some of the things to keep in mind as well. Cool? So that's what I had. If you have any questions, I'm here right now, and available to answer any questions that you may have, also available to answer any questions via email or phone after the session if helpful.
Ulrich, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Hold on, hold on, we're gonna ask the council first. Let me ask my colleagues, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so it seems like it deals with a lot of monitoring in terms of like, dealing with the short-term rentals. Have there been cities that had to create their own agencies or departments just to do so?
Absolutely, many. That said, I don't recommend doing it for a city of your size, it doesn't seem like a good use of taxpayer money, but like City of San Francisco, as an example, has a whole office of short-term rentals. City of New York has a special agency under the mayor, that's essentially like the SWAT team. So bigger cities are doing that kind of stuff. They obviously do it because they think it's important, right? And I think housing affordability is a huge issue in a lot of these larger cities, so that's why they do it. That said, they're probably cheaper raised to do that these days, and that's one of the things that we provide is software, so you don't have to hire like a small army of code enforcement folks.
Got you, okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as the voluntary tax agreements you've mentioned, what are there jurisdictions close to us that have used this, for instance, in partnership with Airbnb?
So there's So there's lots of, I think there's probably about 300 or 400 cities across the world that now have these voluntary tax collection agreements. So there's definitely cities of similar size to Daly City that has it. Again, the the thing with it is that it's sort of like it's money or virtue a lot of times, is how the cities see it. It's like you can get all the money, but you may not get all the virtue. And and that's kind of the issue. But it's a great revenue collection tool, for sure.
So what is the reason why? The data points, I mean, I'm trying to understand why it's not as transparent as far as, I mean, I don't know what their agreement is with, you know, the host that they have. But you said depending on leverage or whatnot, I'm just trying to understand, is it a privacy issue? Because if we, it would be great to have both, right? The data and then if they were to work with us to, you know, facilitate getting the taxes over. So do is, do you know through your research?
It's based on my research, like, there's a number of issues why they generally do not want to share the data. Like, the first thing is essentially a principle thing. It's like a Fourth Amendment, it's like it's unreasonable search and seizure, right? At the end of the day, like, you need to have a probable cause before you can ask for business records of businesses. And they're like, unless there's a probable cause that we're doing something wrong, we're not going to give it to you. So that's one reason. But in New York City, actually, just lost a lawsuit on that ground, like constitutionality. I think the other reason is that the platform just said, we have a privacy obligation, and then the city, like, hosts are sharing data with us, we're not going to provide all that. It's also essentially essentially their income, right? It's almost like if the city asked for everyone's like 1099s and W2s, like, I don't know if that would be reasonable either. So they're kind of saying that's another thing. And then I think finally, and this is speculation, you'll have to ask them, but they make a lot of money from people who probably wouldn't be able to get a permit. My estimate is about 60% of their revenue come from people who are essentially not able to get a permit because they wouldn't fit into San Francisco's or New York's rules. And I think that they don't want to make it too easy for the cities to figure that out. So by not providing the data, they essentially get all the revenue without having to reveal sort of like these offenders. So that would be one of the reasons.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. No, California is unique in the sense of landlord-tenant complaints. And I would assume that the short-term and even long-term rentals may give rise to the person who is in the home, not the host, but the person who is actually taking advantage of, taking advantage of or renting the property. Would they be classified as a tenant, or would they be classified as a guest? Because within California law, within a certain amount of time, I believe it's 14 days, if you stay on a property, you have now established tenancy to, unless it's delineated in the rental agreement, will that come into play? In other words, the rental agreement will have to state, you are a guest, and subsequently, you cannot establish tenancy for this timeframe. Your experience, have you seen that?
Yeah, so again, I'm not an expert in California law. I'm sure there are other people who would know better. But to my knowledge, 30 days is typically the delineation, and therefore, if you do stay longer than 30 days, it is classified as a long-term lease, and you will have tenants' rights after having stayed there for a certain amount of time, which is why short-term rentals are often defined as stays for 30 days and shorter. So the point is, that's what we're talking about here. But for people who do decide to rent out their property for more than 30 days, they technically are subject to California law-related tenancy, and that can have all sorts of implications for them.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. Excellent. Given the fact that I guess you were told we would probably have, hopefully, three hotels, what impact would that have for us? And secondly, currently, according to Project Sentinel, we have a great code enforcement that is going through our ADUs and in-laws that are illegal, but people are losing the roof over their head. So we have multitudes, we have 1,500 illegal in-laws that are being looked at, that may have to, the people may have to be removed from, which means how many people in our own city are now currently will be looking for a place to live. And that data came from Project Sentinel. So that also has an impact, that they will not be able to have a place to live, correct?
Right, so I'm not familiar with this particular initiative, but like, I can tell you that a lot of ADUs are being used for short-term rentals, because at the end of the day, you can triple your gross rent by doing a full-time short-term rental versus renting it out on a long-term basis. So as you think about regulation, I do think it's very important to think about ADUs particularly. Like, is that a use that you will allow short-term rentals be used, ADUs be used as short-term rentals or not? In a context of many of them may not be legal in the first place. But I think there's a huge interplay there, and you got to be careful. So in a lot of cities, for example, Pasadena, West Hollywood, and Los Angeles, they have adopted rules that specifically say that if you have a permitted ADU, you cannot use it for a short-term rental. The whole idea of the ADU regulation, as it was adopted a couple of years ago, was to create more affordable housing. And now taking this and turning it into full-time hotels goes completely counter to the objective of those regulations.
Right, so that, you're right. Because the consequence of that is a couple of them have already started doing the short-term thing, telling the people different things about getting them out, and now these people don't have a home. And like you said, affordable housing is very, very key. And then about our hotels, that that also causes an impact as well.
Yeah, so hotels, I don't think hotels necessarily have an impact on affordable housing, because most people can't afford that. But I do feel that there's obviously cannibalization between those two industries. And some of it is healthy competition, don't get me wrong. Like, it's, there's nothing wrong with competition. You just want to make sure it's a level playing field. And obviously, if the hotels pay taxes and have to comply with ADU rules and other things, and the short-term rentals don't, there is a fair argument to be made that that may not be a level playing field.
So one real quick thing is that, okay, in the beginning, it used to be just like the main Airbnb, and according to you, like, there's now hundreds, and there could be more going from one to the other to the other. So that makes it really a lot more difficult to track than back when this all first began, correct?
Absolutely. As we started, when our company started in 2016, we
You've already seen.
We had 16 websites we followed to get to 99% of the universe. Now we have 54, just to give you a sense. Like, it's a massive increase in the number of sites.
Wow. Wow. Thank you for the information. Also, do they include Broadmoor? Because Broadmoor is unincorporated coma, I mean, unincorporated county.
I don't know. We got this shape file from planning departments. I forget if Broadmoor is included, but we can go back and look.
No, it's okay, because, you know, they're not, they're not Daly City. But thank you, appreciate everything you did.
That's right.
Are there also regulations in other cities where there's a regulation of how many short-term rentals there are in the neighborhood? Like, let's just say that we don't want to have like a neighborhood hotel type of effect.
Yeah, absolutely. So like, a lot of cities actually uses existing zoning regulations to regulate this. So for example, in the state of Monterey, not too far from here, they allow short-term rentals in the hotel zone, which is downtown, but they do not allow it in the residentially zone, R1, R2 parts of town. So that's one example. There are also cities that say, we do allow it in these zones, but we will set a quota. So we will only allow, call it like 2% or 12% or whatever the city decides is the appropriate limit to be used as short-term rentals. And once those permits have been allocated, people essentially have to wait for one other permit to sort of like get rescinded before they can get a permit themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have some. Can you talk about the the regulations that can be enacted to control the parking of the people who are renting the short-term rentals? What can be done in terms of regulating whether or not they can even, can we regulate that they have a certain number of cars or that they have no cars? And then, secondly, what about the 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 actual, is there some kind of mechanism of determining how many people actually are renting a particular? I understand the concept, when you rent a short-term rental, one person might rent it, but there might be two or three people who are guests or living, and is that being accounted for in terms of the statistics?
Yeah, so so to maybe answer both of your questions, Mr. Mayor. So the first thing regarding parking, a lot of cities have adopted rules that say that there has to be enough on-site parking to accommodate the amount of vehicles that would support the maximum permitted occupancy of that property. So for example, if it's a four-bedroom, typically, the the regulations would say for a maximum occupancy, we would essentially allow two people per bedroom plus two. So basically, if it was a four-bedroom, they would typically say, the formula would allow up to 10 people to stay there. And then they would say, typically, a car holds four people, five people, so that means there had to be on-site parking for at least two cars to accommodate that occupancy. So there's a various like straightforward formula to decide both occupancy or maximum occupancy and the minimum amount of on-site parking. So those are typically used. There are obviously a lot of communities where there isn't enough on-site parking in the first place, and everyone relies parking in the street, and then things get a little bit more complicated. So typically, then, what cities say is that, what is the the total amount of permits you could get? So for example, if everyone in in the residential neighborhood has to have a resident permit parking, and this house has two permit parking, two parking permits, it would only allow the guests of the short-term rental to use those two particular long-term resident parking permits. And those essentially have to be provided by the host to the guest during the stay, so everyone can check that it's properly permitted. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And so what about the guests?
Yeah, so guests, so for people coming to basically hang out for the day, that's a little more complicated, right? So generally, cities have the, taken the stance that it's really not possible to regulate, just like if any other citizen decided to host a party or family gathering. There really aren't rules that determine what you cannot and how many people you can have during the daytime. But if you, for example, decide to play amplified music, or like have like a massive wedding or something like that, you would have to have an event type of permit, and that would be enforced, just like it would be for a citizen if they were to do that, for short-term rental hosts as well. So they really use the event regulations to manage that.
Okay.
But but for example, if a code enforcement officer shows up at night and sees 40 people in the house, and the permit says only 10 people allowed, they should have the ability to actually shut down the party, just like the citizens would have. Because they say that is over occupancy, only 10 people allowed at this point.
Okay. So this is a study session, so normally, we don't allow public comment or questions, but I know Mr. Swine is very involved in this issue. Did you want to ask a question, Mr. Swine?
Ulrich, you have some good data for the number of units that are available for rental, and also, you showed a curve of how many days are being rented and whatnot. And we're all concerned about the cost of enforcement. But where to extract from that about how many dollars are being generated? And if we were charging a 14% hotel tax, how much money is in it for the city to pay for the enforcement and the regulation and licensing?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So I haven't run the particular numbers for this as part of this, it may be in the report, I forget. But the point is that most cities find that the TOT and the permit fees more than pay for any enforcement. And obviously, the way that most cities structure the permit fees is that it's essentially designed to recover the costs of the enforcement program. So it's not the general fund or the general citizens that have to pay for that sort of privilege. And then the TOT is all incremental, and that essentially goes to the general fund to promote whatever objectives you have and priorities that you have. So the idea is that the permit fee themselves make the program cost-neutral, and then everything above that is essentially incremental into the city's coffers. That said, most of our clients make somewhere between five and 20 times the amount of money. So so I don't think there's a single case of any of our clients, at least, that don't make incremental revenue from these programs.
Okay. One more.
Not a question, but a comment. My wife and I travel overseas twice a year, three and a half weeks in a crack. We never stay in hotels. We always stay in Airbnbs and booking.com. We've probably stayed in 100 or more units in many different countries. I can tell you right now, if we were staying in Airbnb in Daly City, we wouldn't be having dinner in Daly City. We'd be having dinner in San Francisco. We didn't come to visit Daly City. San Francisco is a restaurant mecca. So the only thing that I see that we'd be spending in Daly City would be food for breakfast. That'd be it. And that's based on a lot of experience over a lot of years all over the place.
Okay, thank you. That was very helpful. I'm sure we're going to have you come back, and we're going to have a lot more questions. And thank you for your presentation, it was wonderful.
Thank you.
Very informative. Okay, where we go next? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I just have one quick, one quick, that's okay, sorry, Mr. Mayor. One quick question is, when you have these Airbnbs and these type of rentals in the neighborhoods, what type of zoning changes are, wouldn't be needed or have to be needed? Because obviously, it changes the neighborhood itself. And how, what have you seen, experienced, or any of that? If you don't mind giving me some feedback, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
So from what I understand from stats report, like, currently, all the code is completely silent on this. It's sort of like it didn't exist. So typically, what cities that are in that situation do is that they clarify. So they make an amendment to the relevant sections of the code. So typically, it would be the zoning regulations. They would say, this is an allowed or not allowed use, or here are the conditions under which it's allowed. Similarly, if if there's a business license, sort of sections of the code, it will say that to do this kind of activity, you need to have a business license, and this is the fee, just like any other use, like defined in the code. And the same with the TOT ordinance. The TOT ordinance probably is already okay. In most cases, the TOT ordinance is pretty wide and define any stay for less than 30 nights as essentially the temporary lodging, and therefore, this would already be covered. But maybe it's worth clarifying by just making a reference to this type of use, even though it may not be necessary. So generally, you don't have to do a major rewrite, it's really just adjusting a few sections of the code to just make sure that it essentially is mentioned somewhere.
Okay, and one real quick one is the criminal background checks. Do these people, these entities, do they do criminal background checks? Or is there anything indicated Airbnb? Has anybody ever come forth, been lawsuits?
Right.
Because we've had some instances, even in Daly City.
Right. So the platforms claim they do some level of background checks. I do not know what that involves, and it's a little cryptic what they do. Also, I've studied maybe the major websites, like some of the more niche sites for sure don't do anything, because they're tiny companies, they don't really have the skill to do that. So I think you should assume that there really isn't background checks in general, or you can't demand that. But I think it's worth noting that I don't know if there's a criminal background check if you check into a hotel in Daly City either, right? I don't think that's sort of like the norm. So at the end of the day, I think if you decide that this is a requirement, you should at least make sure that the hotels are subject to the same regulations.
Got it. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Was there another question from, oh, sir, I didn't mean to ignore you, so it was brought up. Go ahead.
Well, general, I don't know if it's directed him, but it's more concerned of the neighborhood where I'm at, that about a year and a half ago, a house was purpose-built to be an Airbnb house. And it's been like that since they finished. I remember talking to them and asking them, oh, we're going to move in, our whole family and everything, because they figured how much they were adding on, how big it was. It was purpose-built, it's Airbnb-ed out all the time. I have another couple of big, I mean, I call them monster houses. There are three-story houses on a same lot as I'm on. You know, there's no yard, they're building them, and I don't know if it's going to be the same kind of issue that these people are doing. They're purposely buying small little places, like you said, coming in, they demoed what was there, and they're building two big giant monster houses on it. Now, there's no way to ask them, you know, what is it doing it for? They're just building a house, they got the permits, they're doing it all the right way, but then it's Airbnb-ed out. So I mean, that's my concern. And then, in the neighborhood, I've been there almost 20 years, I've seen a lot of changes. I try to know all my neighbors, you know, who are actual homeowners that live there. But a lot of the houses have changed, the demographics have changed, you know, people are renting them out, or they live in the top and they rent the whole bottom out. So, you know, that's just it, it's my concern.
Okay, thank you for coming, I appreciate it very much. Okay, who's, okay, did you want to say something, sir?
Oh, yeah. I don't want necessarily stand up there with people, you know. What's your plan to deal with this looming problem that will in time compromise the health and safety of tourists? There's a house up the street from us, if I may cite an example. The house was
a house up the street from us, if I may cite an example. Uh, the house was designated as a single-family dwelling, but recently, the house was sold. It's been completely restored. Beautiful job. New owners moved in, split the house into three segments. Each intended to be a, an Airbnb unit. And right now, there's not a lot of activity there, but it will come. We know this to be a fact. And someday, eh, if something isn't done and there is a tragedy, a fire, no way for these poor tourists to egress, to get out in a timely fashion. There will be the devil to pay. I think you understand that. Eh, and I, out my back window, I can see at least two Airbnbs and I can watch the big black birds get into the garbage after the night before. That garbage, it's all over the street. I feel like going down there as a good citizen and picking it up to starve the birds, at least. But eh, but somebody does show up, the maid shows up, picks up the mess, puts it back in the, in the cans and it's off to another day. And then on the, on this point, I don't wanna read you the whole thing. I typed up back in November. So it's a little late, little date.
Yeah, we, 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 I think we're getting, yeah, we, we, we're getting your, your point and your ideas, but we have to move the meeting along. So.
One more thing, though.
Okay.
Just one word.
All right.
I appreciate your attention.
Sure.
How does ADA figure into these little businesses?
That's right.
Yeah. Do you think about that?
Absolutely. We will. That's very important.
You can do it. Hope we're recording.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. All right. Okay. Uh, who's next? Final comment?
Sorry. I have one last question. I think it's, it's, it's coinciding with kind of the entire home rentals that was mentioned earlier, um, that I do notice, okay, maybe they do have parking for individual cars. But what I have seen is, um, large 15-seat passenger vehicles that come into like the driveway of, um, these now entire buildings. And I mean, I don't know, this is obviously an ordinance on short-term rentals, but I don't know how that can be included because then it does, uh, what it does is it goes onto sidewalks, it messes up our streets. And yet, um, that's how I figure out it's definitely a rental because it's a 15-seater van that's not always there. And then it's a different color the next week. Um, but I think that's also something that we need to look into because it does, it deteriorates our streets and then our sidewalks. So.
I, um, I was very impressed with the task force that came together last year. And it seemed like it was a good group of people. Um, a lot of the issues were worked out and we came out of it with, with a real resolution of sort. And, and we came together and, and I thought it was, it was a great thing to do. So what, what is the, are we, are they, are they still the same members? Are people falling out? What's the plan for?
Well, our, our plan was to report their findings and maybe summarize some of their recommendations to you tonight. Uh, let's see. And so I was, we were just gonna go through some of the, a synthesis of, you know, what some of their conclusions were. Um, some quick bullet points here. Limiting the number of consecutive days to 30, um, the task force thought that was appropriate. Um, although the answers varied from 30 days to 90 days. The task force thought on the second bullet that the total number of calendar days that, uh, of short-term room rental could be allowed at any given home should be between 60, 120 days. There was some consensus that the city should not permit property owners who not, uh, who do not reside at the property to conduct short-term room rentals. And that's actually a pretty big one. Um, we provided a summary of the short-term rental ordinance matrix for San Francisco, Berkeley, Santa Monica, Los Angeles, Redwood City. And across the board, eh, it seemed as though a host-present rule, um, was something that those communities thought was important. So this is not a, um, you know, anything different than other cities would have, have already enacted. So that's a big one. The task force also found, eh, there were, there were mixed opinions rather about whether the use of the entire home should be allowed. Some, uh, members of the task force thought that was appropriate. Some thought it should be limited to just a portion of the home. Uh, so the city council will need to give some direction on that. There was definite consensus that apartments should not be used as short-term room rentals. And there were mixed opinions about whether such rentals should be allowed in accessory dwelling units. Of course, this taught, this use of ADUs is, again, as Mr. Binzer had mentioned, eh, is limited in a lot of California cities. The state, uh, liberalized the allowance of ADU statewide a couple of years ago with the intent of providing more affordable housing opportunities for people and not necessarily providing additional, uh, short-term room rental opportunities. So, um, that's something to definitely think about. So we listed some of the comments and they're in the staff report. We won't go through these that the task force mem- members made. Uh, there's a concern about, uh, just in general about short-term room rentals and people not knowing, uh, who is in the neighborhood anymore. Um, before, uh, room rentals existed, of course, eh, this, it was a harder activity to perform. And now it's easy as, you know, getting on a website and, you know, every night, there could be a new person next door. So that's definitely an issue. Um, the concept of, uh, some of the, um, one of the speakers mentioned homes being built specifically for this purpose, uh, instead of being used to house people, you know, can have an impact on the housing market. And so that's a concern, uh, that was, uh, mentioned at the task force meetings. Um, yeah, just a, essentially, the erosion of the neighborhood sense of community, people coming and going, strangers rocking up and down the block is a concern. So this is something to keep in mind as we move through the rental, uh, the development of the short-term rental regulations. Um, we thought we'd provide an overview of the different kinds of STRRs that exist. This is, uh, using, uh, right out of the City of Pasadena's regulations. So there are hosted and unhosted stays. Hosted stays are those where home-sharing activities, uh, that where the host is onsite throughout the guest's stay. So that's something that the city could consider. Um, and unhosted, and hu- unhosted stay is one where the activity um, i- is allowed, where the activity, where the host is not there during the stay. So the host may go on vacation and decide that they'd like to rent out eh, their entire home, for example, while they're on vacation. That would be an unhosted stay. And then a vacation rental is a dwelling unit where the primary, uh, the occupancy of the unit is not, uh, that of the homeowner. So the home, the, or the, rather, the owner of the property lives elsewhere. And so that's a, essentially, a vacation rental. Uh, and the home can be rented out for a unspecified number of days and the person who owns the house actually doesn't live there. So that's sort of a, in a nutshell, the three different types of STRRs. What we're asking the city council to consider is, uh, essentially, there are some main bullet points that we'd like you to discuss. And, um, if we don't do it tonight, to take away and to think about, do we want to allow STRRs at all? I think that there's um, a lot of good reasons why we might want to allow them. A complete ban on them would seem to, to the city staff to be somewhat problematic, just in terms of enforcement. So the first bullet may be an easy one. Uh, so allow hosted or unhosted or vacation rentals. So do we require the property owner to be present during the stay? Or do we allow them to be, um, to, it's their primary residence, but they just rent it while they're on vacation? Or the most liberal approach would be to not require that they be the resident of the home at all. They could live somewhere else and they could, uh, rent their unit out whenever they feel like it. So should there be a limit on consecutive days that the rental can occur? And a limit on the number of calendar days within a year, uh, that the rental could occur? And if so, how many? And, uh, would we allow the entire home to be used as a rental? And then lastly, allow apartments and second units as a rental? It seems like the last bullet might be an easy one. There was a, there was some consensus, there was consensus that apartments shouldn't be used as rentals among the task force members. And I think it would be fair to say that there was, uh, some concern about allowing ADUs or second units to be, uh, used as well. So, um, we really need to, uh, focus on whether, uh, the city would want to, uh, allow hosted or unhosted and how many days, uh, per year. 30 seems to be like a good, uh, operating number. Um, I don't know if we wanted to come back again with, uh, allow the council to adjust this some more, or we could prepare an ordinance and discuss that at, at that time. That, that's a, a fine approach, too. Um, so.
Yeah. So let me ask, um, my colleagues. I mean, I, I, I think that, that we, I think the answer to the first question, whether or not we should allow it, I think that's clear that we should because I don't want to be like Redondo Beach where we ban it and we end up not reaping any of the benefits and it, it not being enforced. So I think the central question really is hosted or, or, or not. And, um, I'm interested in, in actually knowing more about how that affects the typical mom and pop kind of operation. And, and I'm interested in whether or not, I, I don't know, is that going to have some significant impact on their ability to, to earn some kind of an income and if we, if we do it one way or another?
Well, eh, eh, it can have some impact. I mean, some of the people who, who use their homes for VRBO and Airbnb are people who have, they may have lived here their whole life and they move out of the area. And they still own that property, but they want to uh, use it as an Airbnb. And some of those people could be caught up in a complete ban of, um, say, if we just, if we required only hosted stays. So that's, but that's, you know, something to consider. Um, th- there's different, you know, implications of each one of these things. Unhosted stays, um, that's, you know, something that the council may, um, you know, desire. It's, yeah, it's, I don't know. I don't know if you had anything you want to add on to that, Ulrich. Um, it's really sort of a, a judgment call on your part.
Go ahead. Did you want to add something?
So I think it's important to disaggregate it because it gets very confusing really quickly. So I think the first question is really about, do you have to be the primary resident of the property that you're renting out irrespective of whether or not it's hosted or unhosted, right? So do you allow essentially investors to do this? Or do you have to be someone who actually lives on the property? Eh, so I think that's the first question you have to answer. Then the next question then becomes if you decide that only people who are primary residents and actually live there, at least some of the year, are the ones that are allowed to get a permit. Then the question then becomes, are they allowed to rent out the entire unit while they're not there? So for example, if you're a flight attendant and you go overseas or whatever for, for a number of, of weeks a year, eh, are you allowed to rent out that unit while you're not actually eh, in town? Eh, or are you only allowed to do it if you are physically there and essentially renting out a spare bedroom or multiple spare bedrooms while you're still residing in one of the other bedrooms? And obviously, then the flight attendant can't do it because that person is overseas and couldn't do it. So it's, so I think it's really like disaggregating those two things and say, first of all, who is allowed to participate? Primary residents or everyone? And then secondly, if they do participate, do they actually have to physically be there during the duration of the stay? Eh, so I think if you think about it from that perspective, the impacts are quite different, right? Eh, and, and I think the reality is like the impact to the citizens of not allowing investors to do this is probably relatively minor because they don't live here anyway. Eh, eh, obviously, if you're only allowed to rent out when you're physically there, that puts a lot of limitations. So you couldn't rent it out when you go on vacation, for example, right? You're essentially only allowed to do room rentals. The entire unit use is not a permitted use. So that's how we think about it.
Is there a, um, are we under some kind of a timeline to have this?
No, we're not. No. No, and it was the consensus of the task force that I, just as Ulrich mentioned, that maybe we would not allow investors to participate in so that the only residents can, can conduct, uh, short-term room rentals.
Okay.
And no, we're not under any sort of, um, state mandate for adopting such an ordinance.
Okay. So go ahead.
Oh, I mean, the only interest in having this move forward quickly is, you know, obviously, there's revenue lost as we're not regulating it. So that would be really what would urge us to move this forward. But there's no regulatory requirement that we do so.
Okay. So I need help from my colleagues here. I need you to help, uh, weigh in on what your thoughts are about making some kind of decision today, some parameters on what the options are? Or do you think you need some more time to, um, research, get more, um, input from the community, from your different constituents? Um, what do you think? Mr. Vice Mayor?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment. Um, we started this, uh, this whole get-together on STRs and it was precipitated as a result of complaints that was made. Complaints were on parking. Complaints were made regarding too many people staying in different homes. And now there's come to this. And I'm, have to thank the task force, your staff, and Mr. Binzer for your presentation. And what I enjoyed about your presentation was it was very, very unbiased. So you gave the good and bad on both sides. To answer one of the questions, Mr. Mayor, as you requested, uh, what's coming to me, uh, the task force wanted the owner or someone to be on the premises. And I tried to put myself in the, uh, person's shoes who's going to rent a unit. If I'm gonna go over to Europe and I'm going to do an Airbnb and I got my family with me, I don't want the owner on the property. I wanna, I want that place to myself. So I, I think that needs to be taken in consideration. If it is an unhosted site, if we give restrictions as to how long they can, uh, rent it, say no more than 90 days a year or no more than 30, uh, consecutive days, the unhosted will take care of itself. Because obviously, you can't unhost for a whole entire year if we just said 90 days. So that's gonna take care of itself. So I think we need to take that back to the task force to have them think about the hosted aspect. I remember what came to this council before through planning was a person who wanted to build a five-bedroom home with five bathrooms. That's telling me what that's going to be. And basically, it's an Airbnb. So I, I think moving forward, when we see these things come up, we'll take the appropriate actions and look in, into this. But at the same time, I respect property owners' rights. And there are pros and cons to doing an Airbnb because you may have a couple who's living in the home and maybe their low source of income might be social security. So they rent their homes out to make ends meet. Have we thought about that? Eh, and yet, uh, that helps them out. I also have, getting back to why we have STR, what we're considering in this, I love the idea about safety. That was a concern. Neighborhood demographics will change as a result of people moving in and moving out. Um, I'll try and make this quick. The cons I see are reduced inventory of rental units. What will happen is if you move strictly to Airbnb, you will subsequently take away rental units to which people are looking for. And the whole idea is affordable housing. It is more lucrative to do Airbnb, but at the same time, you're taking rentals off the market. That's my, that's one of the cons I see. The neighborhood demographics I've made mention and the parking concerns I made mention, but we're going to look into that. The pros that I see, um, business, business plan. Airbnb is a, is a business plan and it's like no other, well, like Uber. They don't have to carry inventory. You folks who own the homes are the inventory. So, and, and that's how they do well. So you can't get over the business plans that exist. So that is what it is. Um, as Mr. Binzer had made mention, the top four areas, Westlake, uh, Old Original, Daly City, those are the top areas where there was the biggest complaint about parking problems. And it's obviously so because it's near transportation. So the pros, folks are going to go where there's absolute, and there's, uh, transportation. Income, that was answered. I'm almost done, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm concerned about cost recovery. Who will determine the amount of fees that we will charge? Not all folks will be compliant. And subsequently, those who are compliant, are they paying for the others who are non-compliant? How do we enforce it? So, uh- So Dr. Rod Asmaq Bual had led to it, cost recovery, transit occupancy tax. We have to come back, and I guess that's for staff to figure it out. Parking permits, that's, I'm going to close, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that Daly City does have something that we can start, and believe me, I trust our community in Daly City because if we don't see it, they will, and they will report it. And we have something called iHelp, so if we can make a link on iHelp, possible illegal Airbnb usage, and that, that information can be tracked, to include providing links and pictures because, as Mr. Binzer says, if they take it down, it'll disappear, but the constituents here in Daly City will capture it. So hosted versus unhosted, I am in favor of no more than 30 days for, for each one, and that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Ron.
I just want to thank the task force. I think the task force did a great job in terms of their input and insight. I also want to thank Mr. Binzer for putting together a report that is very thorough, and with the demographics that represents the different neighborhoods in Daly City, I feel like it gives me a, a good picture of like where are the strong interests are in terms of the short-term rentals. I think giving the findings, given the information that's given to us, and knowing that the, I guess, all the data and findings was in April 2018, it's already March, it's almost been a year. So I am, I'm down to have the staff curtail some sort of ordinance along with the lead of, of our city lawyer, and then come back and create something that we can all agree on.
Good point.
Good.
Madam Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Echoing my colleagues, I want to thank the community members that really put their effort and time into the task force as well as the presentation given today. Yeah, this was brought forth a while back, and I think what's important is that it was a community effort in hearing the input from the community and also from the analysis from our consultant here, that we do move forward to ordinance and see what we will have at that time. I think what's important for me as well is, I think it's mentioned there, what happened, what's happening with the housing crisis, and that there, there is an impact in, in some sort of way if these were at one point long-term rentals. So I think with the ADUs, that's particularly one area that I feel that should be moving towards making sure they're long-term rentals. I mean, that was the reason why, the impetus towards that, and so it's one avenue that we're looking at to help solve kind of this crisis that we have. But I, I think we do need to move forward to that as you present us with the ordinance. And no hosts, and I think if there is a, a maximum, I think that, that would solve for kind of the issues that were talked about earlier.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, that's pretty good. Yesterday was World Pasta Day. Thank you very much.
Okay. Did you bring any pasta?
Actually, yeah. I mean, I don't want to repeat like everybody else, but the task force did an excellent job. The concerns have been going on for a long time. The monster houses that are being built in, in the Bay Shore is a constant going on. I would like to make sure we address that immediately, that these purpose-filled, that we know when they come before us, as Vice Mayor alluded to, when they, they present it to us as their family members are moving in, and we got five bedrooms, and we're going to have a bath downstairs, and all those different things, that we need to stop it. That's like taking away the character of our neighborhoods, so that's a big concern. I'm concerned about the ADA implications, as was brought up in Southern Hills, and that is a big one because we currently have someone that has a child who's paralyzed, who's looking for an affordable place to live in our community and cannot find one, and be based on a wheelchair access for her son who's 20 years old. So that's, that's a big, huge concern. And the affordability, I'm concerned that it will take away a lot of the affordability units, change the character of the neighborhoods, and perhaps maybe look at just limiting certain number permits, like very small, because we have to remember, we're Daly City, and I'm sure that he alluded to this, this is a totally different demographics and bedroom community. The way we're built here with our ceremony mall, but we, we're neighborhoods. We're not like other cities, so we have to recognize that and the impact of the people that have lived here 40, 50 years. There's still a lot of input from community members, some that are sitting here tonight that haven't had a voice, who I just see him come in here, be it that they were a little, for our study session, but I think that they have a voice that they would like to speak from. They take care of disabled adults as well, and have big inputs in here as well. But it has to be done. I remember people coming in, but how do we regulate it? How do we really regulate it? That's what I'm really concerned about. How do we regulate? And, because there are 100 sites, they shift from some side to side to side to side, so that's a big concern. But if they can come back and we can start looking at something and crafting something, it has to be something. It cannot be nothing. So I'm willing to look at that. As far as the days, I'm not really sure of that yet. Some, I've received several phone calls, so I have to look into that. And I want to please remember, this is something new that are, about bringing up the ADUs and people being displaced in our community recently, was from Mark Nagalas that gave me the call and told me, and hopefully we can have him present, Project Sentinel. He's getting numerous calls from Daly City that, yes, we are doing our job on our illegal in-laws, but now we have families that cannot find a place to live for long term in Daly City, and they go to our schools, they have children, there are Filipino community, there are wide API, they're everything. So we need to remember, we don't want to push them out. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Ms. Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the direction this council is providing, but I do want to provide some input in regards to the TOT tax ordinance. Part of the consideration for short-term rental is that we would be collecting TOT. So in looking at some of the options that are presented before the task, task force, to be consistent with the ordinance that was adopted just recently, we cannot have consecutive days more than 30 days to be defined as transient. So I know that some of the options include three to 90 days, but to be consistent for TOT for consecutive days, it should be 30 days or less to be defined as. And so we'll be working together with planning to be crafting an ordinance to have it consistent with TOT, and there are certain requirements that the host owners of these TOT, these, short-term rentals would have to comply with, with regards to our TOT tax ordinance as well as providing a business permit. So there are some other requirements for us to be able to collect on TOT, but we will provide you an ordinance with those regulations, consistency.
So just so we're clear, so we, we provide you some direction, and what's going to happen is you're going to craft an ordinance, and then we're going to come back and we're going to be able to chip away at that ordinance, and we're going to, this is at a public hearing where the, the public can make comments? Okay.
Madam City Attorney, so you said 30 days, I'm all for it. What happens if we have an Airbnb host who rents for three days? Do we not collect TOT?
You do collect TOT. It's not more than 30 days. It's considered transient.
Got you. And in crafting the ordinance, would you also please consider, since parking was mentioned during the presentation, that later on, should we establish parking permits, that that ordinance can change and it would apply to the STR?
To shoot short-term rental.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Coming up on our seven o'clock meeting, do we have anything else? No? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. We're going to start in about two minutes. I gotta get my.